Okay.
Okay. So. You're welcome, Kelly. You know, we want you to be able to hear us. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Well, are you going to talk about the huge crowd we had last week?
Standing your mind.
Yeah.
I was glad we were in the big room.
Pardon?
I was glad we were in the big room.
Yeah.
Uh, no, I mean, I, I would just like to commend you. I thought it was a very good presentation.
Absolutely.
Um, I don't know how many got to see it afterwards or before afterwards. Um, I did go stop a board meeting afterwards, Lisa and myself. Got caught, kind of corralled. Um, and there was one gentleman there that wants to speak to you, so I don't know if he got over you or not.
I bet I knew who that was. But anyway, great presentation. Um, a lot of good information.
There was a lot of good information.
Yes. Uh, so I'm sure if anybody would like to see the information, you could make it available to them.
Absolutely. Already have sent into Lisa and had some questions with Mary Heard. Lot of good numbers I haven't heard before and a lot of projections and, and don't know, plan going forward is, uh, even this last past year was aggressive and. Yeah, they knocked off some bridges.
Yeah, we did.
So hopefully we can have a work session next week and then get on its way up to IDOT.
Sounds good to me.
The requirements all taken care of and entered into the software.
We will, we will do that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any visitors or citizens that wish to address the board at this time? Bearing none, we'll move on to our next appointment is with Teresa Weinchen from the Preston as city administrator. So come on up, Teresa. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
But the city of Preston is requesting is an extension of five years on tip. So we're requesting the approval of the county on a fifteen year tip. Um. I just love, you just had to make sure. Usually I've, I've got a black screen. So, um, Preston has been working, uh, they purchased land from Wayne and Sally Marvin in two thousand sixteen. So, um, it's called the Marvin subdivision and the city is looking at developing that. Right now we're looking at twenty-six lots, um, being available. Um, originally it was thirty lots, four of those lots had to, be forfeited for a drainage retention plan. So, um, housing in Preston is a commodity. We do, our other subdivisions are full. So we do need this, uh, would like to move forward with this housing project.
Understandable.
Um, I guess just to, so the public understands a little better, it, it has been, so the, the resolution includes this area.
Yes.
Which at this point is still A, correct?
Correct. It's undeveloped.
So it was bought by the city of Preston years, by the city of Preston?
City of Preston.
Okay, so that was bought by them years ago and it was, uh, it was tipped at that point for fifteen years. Now five years have acquired and you're looking to.
They set up an urban renewal area to establish a frozen base. And then once we start developing it, selling lots and building houses, it will, um, become available for tip asking. So that, that frozen base then will start developing and that tax above that, uh, is what we'll be requesting back. And that will be for, uh, developing it, the infrastructure we have to put in place. And that'll be a part of the payment. It's definitely, um, cause probably for the first two, three years, uh, you know, there's not going to be tip available because there's not going to be any increase in that. You know, hopefully, um, we're planning on, uh, paying for that development, selling our lots, um, using that to make payments and then part of our, utilities helping with that. Um, yes.
You don't have to crank around. Um, you have not requested any, any dollars from that district, correct? When will you start collecting, um, when, when will you incur debt on that? Cause then that will start the process for the new.
We are going to start development in that property, uh, this spring will be going out there. We expect that it will be completed. The infrastructure will be complete in November.
Okay, so it's this kind, so within this next year that you'll incur debt?
Yes.
Yes.
So when you say infrastructure, you're talking street too, or just sewer and water and?
Sewer, water, street. And yeah, we're not looking at, um, anything for our electrical or our gas. We'll take, we're planning on taking care of that ourselves.
And I know I've asked this before in different TIF, um, structured, other structured. I know that they can be structured in many different ways. I've been told that I'm not an expert on TIF planning. Um, but I still at some point would like to see the school and the emergency services get their portion of the tax that is due to the net. And Dave, maybe you could comment on that. We've talked about that before in different situations.
So yeah, keep in mind that the, uh, even when tax increment is used, the school, well, any debt service that any taxing body has will continue to get that levy directed toward whatever their projects were. So as a, for instance, let's say that, um, the jail referendum is approved and the county, uh, has debt for that project. Whatever that portion of your levy is would, any new increment would still pay towards that levy. The, the tax increment financing would not take that away. That, that would still come to the county. As, as is true with the schools, um, or, or the community college, because I know they have a referendum too on, on the ballot on the second. The, the schools also get reimbursed by the state for a portion of their, uh, tax levy and it's, I think, five dollars and forty cents of their levy is reimbursed by, by the state. Uh, so a, a, and then they, they have a couple of other levies, like their Pebble and, um, yeah, I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and take a look, but there, there are like three of their levies that, um, they'll, they'll continue to get even if tax increment is used. And then go back to the question of when it would start, it, you know, it's, it'd be a couple of years out before there'd be any increment here that would, uh, even be available to help repay some of the debt that the city is going to be incurring. So it would be at that point that the, the clock starts on this part of their urban renewal district. Uh, so even though the urban renewal plan and this area has been in the plan for a few years, the clock hasn't started on this part of their district. So Mike, does that answer?
Yeah, I think, I just think it's important for the public to understand that also, you know, that, that it's still getting there. But the schools are still getting funding and, and the emergency services and, and some kind of programs. I, I, I think that Preston is an up and coming community. I think there's really good potential from the Thompson project, uh, basically your folks. I think it's, uh,
I think it has lots of potential. Truly do.
We're really excited to be moving forward. And having this forward momentum now. And it's really a housing shortage in Preston and houses come up for sale and they're, they're, they don't stay on the market long.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's positive for Jackson County, Jackson County.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Yeah. The benefits from that. So no, I would make an emotion to approve the resolution number.
Seven nine six dash zero two dash two three dash twenty twenty-one.
As presented.
I know, I think that motion.
With the motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Beautiful day.
Yeah. Don't get too much.
Everybody's excited about forty degrees.
So what are we talking about now?
Well, I asked to have Sarah come down, but.
Oh.
We may have to bypass her temporarily.
You want to?
I can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At this time, we'll move to, uh, Lisa Smith.
Okay, thank you.
So this morning I made a motion to bring the minutes of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, or the cities of. Not price publication in the official news.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the publishing of our minutes from February sixteenth. All those in favor?
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue a handwritten warrant for three hundred and sixty dollars to Robert Canty for a warrant that was canceled in February of twenty twenty.
Motion to approve, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the handwritten warrant for three hundred and sixty dollars to Robert Canty. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a class A liquor license to SNK Gas and Food LLC at eighteen W Cascade Road, Zorango, effective April fifteenth, twenty twenty-one to April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion.
Hi.
I'm good.
Lisa, you're not muted by the way, and you're, got some background noise going on.
Uh, I also need a motion to approve a class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Jimmy B's LLC at twenty-one seven oh one East Hill Drive in Bernard, effective March thirteenth, twenty twenty-one to March twelve, twenty twenty-two.
So move, move to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the class C liquor license for Jimmy B's LLC in Bernard, Iowa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Um, I've had a conversation with Matt Speck from ECIA and we need the board to appoint one member to be the designate for the Brownfield branch as a liaison to ECIA. This will require the designate to sign paperwork on behalf of Jackson County. Once you make your decision, I will need a motion appointing whomever as a designate and I will let Matt Speck and ECIA know. We just need someone to sign some paperwork.
Well, I talked to Matt about it. Um, I don't see that it's an issue. I, I'd be glad to do that.
So do we, going forward, do we need to designate that to maybe the chair?
Well, good thing Sarah's here. We did talk about that, um, that every year, so we get this done. Well, I guess the question is whether you wanted to change every year, every two years, or do you actually remain the same person? I mean, it doesn't really matter as long as you say, as long as ECIA knows who they need to contact.
Well, I guess I don't know what the requirements are. If we can keep it or change it, I mean, we all are involved and if we all get emails and we all read them. So that's a case that we can discuss it when it comes up and, and I guess as of now, I would certainly say.
Well, maybe that's part of your annual appointment is to decide.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, it, it might be a job for the chair and as the chair changes, Luanne always notifies everybody who the chair is. So.
Yeah, we just need to kind of get this tightened up.
Do you need action on that?
Yes, please.
Uh, I would, uh, I would make a motion to approve, uh, to appoint Jack as, or the chair of the board as a designated, uh, representative for that. One second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Alright, we're going to move on past Bjorn. I asked him to come over today, but what I'd like to discuss with you is that we have received a quote, uh, from, for cameras and microphones to be installed here in the boardroom. Um, unfortunately Bjorn is unable to come over and discuss this with you. But, um, I have included in your packet today, a quote that we have received. The gentleman was here last Thursday, I believe, to take a look at the, what we're proposing. This would be something that we still, we could live stream the board supervisors meetings. I think it also would allow you potentially, as we had noted earlier here today, that we did not get a big turnout for the five-year road plan. We could probably have meetings like that here. Maybe you want to have, um, a nine-one-one meeting or whatever. I think if we could move forward on this proposal, it would allow you to.
It's going to open the doors to a lot of additional information.
Yeah, it is.
You could have, uh, you know, any, any, any of the commissions or committees that we serve on for the county, they could meet in here.
Yeah.
Might be tight sometimes, but at least even if you're zooming, you can still
Yeah.
have the meeting here and have people zoom in and still record it and have it livestreamed. So I think, I think it's a great opportunity and something we talked about several years ago and just never did because, uh, the city was coming and taping them. Now they're not. So
Right.
um, I think it's a good investment for the county.
I do too. I think we need to certainly keep up with the way things are moving forward with technology. And it's a perfect example of being transparent, you know, being out there and whatever we, whatever goes on here is available for everyone in the comfort of their home. You know?
I just need your approval.
Zoom is here to say.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would make that motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, the quote from the, uh, camera security solutions. So any further discussion?
That includes moving forward with the project too, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
About four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks and he says it'll be a relatively easy installation. Um, could be in and out, probably a day, maybe two.
There goes Bjorn.
Oh, okay. Well. If you have any questions.
I talked to.
Yep, so did I.
We only have some action here come Monday. In the courtroom. Is he an email? I don't, no, that's not, I'm sorry. Did he vote on that?
No, not yet.
So go ahead.
All those in favor of the, of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, had just a little miniature heart attack. Okay, so what's going to happen on Monday? And maybe Sarah can speak to this too, but we have been in contact with Danny McCowen. He does do the IT, uh, person in Scott County and CTI, I think is the company that's coming on Monday to install some very significant upgrades to the district courtroom. They're going to be delivering the equipment on Friday and the installation will start on Monday. And that will allow prosecutors and defenders to, um, I don't really know what it inhales. So I have a projector and I have a screen and a system that works with that. So when you need to show videos and whatnot, do you do it through this? My understanding from the emails that have been forwarded to me, it seems that this new equipment will then allow us to do the same thing. But instead of it being projected on the wall, it'll be projected on everyone's, like, there will be a screen or multiple screens maybe on the jury box, the judge, um, and the attorneys. Um, but not really sure what it inhales.
Again, I think technology that needs to move forward. So, yeah.
And that paid by Jackson County.
And they'll cost us.
No cost to Jackson County. This is entirely. Yeah.
Hallelujah.
Yeah, so no, no cost to Jackson County for this project. So that's all that I have for the board today.
Okay, we'll move on then to county attorney Sarah Davenport.
Alright, so Jeff Walters sent me a memorandum of understanding that basically just puts into writing what we can discuss at our joint meeting with Iris. As to, you know, what we're going to do to try and collect this, these tasks, dues and what they're going to do. Um, it includes that we're going to send a letter which usually, as I said already, John, to everyone that's going to be on the pass sale, they don't pay their special assessments to include the amount they need to pay. Um, also, one of the things that is beneficial to us is that they are, um, Iris is agreeing that if the property is abandoned, they will remove the brighter promise, which means that, uh, those properties will not continue to accrue. We know for sure there's the one where both parties, both of the owners are deceased, no one's living there, is accruing these costs every month that nobody's paying. But nobody's living there and using it either. Um, so this will allow us to at least cut down on some of that buildup, um, that occurring. And that property actually has an issue where we can't put it on tax anyway. Right. Um, so getting that turned off will be a good deal for us.
I guess I'm curious, the, the letters have gone out from Shelley?
Yeah.
Were they gone? Did they, were they sent certified?
Yes, we're.
Did everyone get them? Did any come back that?
Some did come back, yeah.
So.
Last I knew she had four.
Yeah, okay, I was thinking.
Yeah.
So what do we do with those?
No comeback as they were signed.
Huh?
Comeback that they were signed. She's gotten certification.
Oh, I mean, did any of them not get, were any of them not deliverable?
I don't know.
Um, we would have to call Shelley back over to make sure. I'm not a hundred percent on that. So yes, we do need to figure out here again. I think we sent certified. That was a cost to Jackson County.
Right.
You know, um, you know, if we have to have them served by the sheriff, is that a cost to Jackson County also?
Yes and no. The sheriff doesn't serve us because it's all coming out of the same fund. So you're just moving it from the general fund here to the general fund here. So like when they serve stuff for me, they don't charge me.
Okay.
So the cost would be the cost of the transport for sheriff, the sheriff's people out there. Um, but that's still within their patrol region.
So what if it's not in their patrol region? I mean, some of these are owned.
Yeah, they're owned from people away from here.
Then if we wanted to share, we would have to pay that.
County.
Yeah. And there is like one, I think in Rock Island, and I'm, there's one in the view. Um, so yes, those would have to be served elsewhere. Keep in mind, those properties will go off the taxes.
Yeah.
They're also going to be receiving a delinquent notice from the treasurer. And their people, their, their property will be advertised and they're paid.
So like Jack said, how do we know, when, when you send out the delinquent notice to that property owner, how do we know they're receiving this person in Rock Island?
Um, that I don't, she probably sends those regular, I would imagine.
It's no different than property taxes. How do we know that your property tax that you received it? So, I mean, this is, we have to put some responsibility back on the property owner. It's their responsibility to pay this monthly assessment of Leisure Lake. That's part of owning your property there, but.
You know, I don't dispute that Lisa, but they haven't been doing it. That's why we're going through this process because they've ignored that outstanding bill. So how do we know that they actually got this letter saying, you know, that your, your, your property is going to be on the tax sale if you don't pay this delinquent bill?
We sent it certified.
Yeah, well, but if we don't get back that they have signed for it and got it, how do we know they got?
We had somebody in exactly like that. They had bought that property. They had it for over a year. The person that sold it to them said, I put that system in, I paid for it. They had no idea that they had to pay a monthly charge because the homeowner, who sold it, out, but out lied to them. And that's happened several times.
So.
So, yeah, it really needs to get to. I know that's their fault because they didn't have a lawyer read through the.
But keep in mind, ECIA every month is, is billing all of the people, those three hundred plus people, their
I don't know where they bill.
Monthly sewer assessment.
So with that, with that property being transferred, that's a private issue.
But you'd still think that, don't all the.
Go back at the seller, correct?
Well, yes, if, if they wanted to go after the seller for giving them false information, that's not them. That doesn't, that doesn't take away their liability and responsibility.
Right, right. But with that being said, I think we still, whatever we need to do, if we have to certify a delivery in Rock Island, I think we have to aggressively pursue this and then keep up with it.
Do all the people that, I, I thought they did, but I'm just going to clarify, do all the people that own property in Leisure Lake, are they all a part of the Leisure Lake Association?
Yes.
I think.
So I would think that there would be some information that they give out to their property owners there that says. And if this person was told that they didn't have, they, that it was all paid for, you know?
Maybe where that's came. I, I went out and talked to the president out there and explained some of the stuff that we're having trouble with. And part of it was whether real estate contracts were written up to. Is there a proper, is there a building on the property? And if you check, no, you don't go to the second page that says, is there sewer and water systems there? They just checked the front page and then it's gone. I'm like, okay, that needs to be on the front page with the other one to.
Well, that's a contract. That's what we're doing now. Um, Iris is going to be in contact with the homeowners association and try and get them involved. So that they, um, well, one, so they'll contact these delinquent owners, but also so that, you know, when they have their meetings and they send out their newsletter, they can make sure that this information is getting out, you know? I don't think everyone up there realizes that if I don't pay this bill, my, my property can go on tax sale. I'm paying the rest of my bill. Um, so that's why we're trying to get this information out there. And hopefully by doing this and by taking this action, word will get around and maybe people will start making them opportunities. Cause I would think it's a lot easier to pay sixty bucks a month than to come up with a thousand dollars to save your property from being taxed.
Well, I guess the reason I'm trying to, I think we need to get this settled and done is because if we go to Bellevue and they put the water system over there and they're telling us that that's going to be our responsibility, partially too.
Right.
Um, we don't want this, you know, and, and Mike just said this morning, uh, that they're not going to have individual meters. They'll all pay the same amount. And some of them are seasonal and you know what they're going to think about having to pay the same amount that, uh, year-round resident pays. I mean, I, I can see a nightmare over there as well as the one that we have at Leisure Lake.
Do you know the difference between dressler subdivision and leisure lake? You can shut the water off in dressler.
Yeah, you can do that.
That's going to be.
Which we can't with the sewer.
But that doesn't solve the problem of paying for the system.
No.
That's right. Right. It's an incentive because if you have people who are living there without water, then they don't want to get the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if I'm seasonal and I'm only there during the summer, I'll have it turned off for the whole winter.
Well, yeah, my neighbor's water and grass that's dry, that's another.
Which is why it would be a good idea to maybe try and get them to put those.
And that is about seven hundred thousand dollars, that goes on to the bill.
I'm telling you.
It might be worth it.
It would be, I would be curious to know what the dresser, property owners think. Because if I was a, a silver and I would only have to pay the base amount for the six months that I'm not there, rather than having to pay the usage fee that everyone else is paying, I think I would be okay with that.
What's it cost to put a meter in?
It seems. I think there's a hundred meters there. I was saying it's around seven hundred thousand for everything, the meters.
Sounds like a lot, I mean, you gotta run.
That sounds like.
To the property anyway, all you gotta do is put a meter between there and the house, I mean, that sounds like a lot. And, and the water provider does not provide a meter?
No.
Doesn't sound like it.
Yes, but they're gonna provide in one meter or several meters.
That's their way of, I, I don't know if that's their way of not having to deal with.
Well, they don't wanna collect, I'm not so sure they don't wanna provide, you know, the system or the water, they don't wanna collect, have, have the responsibility or the headache of collecting that.
Nor do we.
Just like, just like this, I'm gonna go back to this. So when, I, I mean, I read the original agreement with Iris and it says in there, they own it and they're responsible, collect it and, and we're all in this together, I, I agree with that and we're moving forward together. So does Iris incur any expenses like we are by sending these letters? Are they?
Only one, I mean, I don't know.
Which letters are we talking about?
Certified.
That's Jackson County at that point, cuz right now, what we've done, that's Jackson County has incurred that.
Right, but it says, our, the memorandum that he set up says both parties will make efforts
Yeah.
to contact them by certified letters, so yes, that is a cost that Iris would be.
And I thought on the phone call, they told us it was our responsibility to collect that.
I think this has changed since then.
Well, that was part of the, you know, the give and take that we were trying to get to, and so that's what this memorandum is, is to put into writing the give and take, what we said we would do, what they said they would do to try to move forward.
As I read it, yeah, we're both responsible and they are taking some authority and supporting and partnering with us to, to make this work, that's the way I'm reading this.
So let's talk about the person that lived in Rock Island, if we were to have them serve sheriff's service or whatever you call it, what's the approximate cost?
Sixty bucks.
So that would be a Jackson County cost or in Iris' cost?
I'm saying we share that cost unless we don't get, if we get, if the tax sale results in enough revenue to pay for all the outstanding bills.
Well, and I think the reality of the guy that worked in Rock Island is that he considers, that he doesn't consider this his property, he says he has sold it. So I'm guessing he received something and so as far as he's concerned, it's not his property, even though.
If it's that one, that one's a mess.
Even though the deed is not, was never filed, so he's not going to care if fabric gets a long one. Except in the letter anyway.
Bottom line is, there's a couple of them here, we're gonna take a hit on, but we're gonna move on with this and go forward. But that property, if, if I'm a neighbor to that property and I can buy that for a minimal amount of money and let them take the grinder pump out so it's not assessed to me on that lot, I think I would love to own that property. At a minimal cost, you know, I mean, that's.
But you can't have too many people take grinder pumps out.
I think that's only two factories we're looking at right now.
I, I mean, it kinda works out there because there's, I wanna say three hundred and twenty-seven grinding pumps out there. So we can take out one or two, that's not a big deal, like Andover, where there's fifteen, you can't do that. Most of the other ones are.
But they're not all.
But it's still, the initial cost is there, I mean, you have to recruit it somewhere. We paid it, it was like ten thousand dollars, put one in.
Well, I guess we were all under the assumption that the, the property that you're putting on has a value that was gonna offset, so like I said, at this point, if we kick the can for a little while, let's move forward here.
Okay, so just so I'm clear. So Shelley sent out the original certified letter. We can have her come over and we can talk about it real quick, like send emails and numbers. I believe that we have received, I think, like you said, three or four back. I'm not sure how many she mailed out, Sarah, do you know?
Yes.
So the question then is, the ones that we have not received back, what or who do you want to go to the next step?
I believe there were seven.
So seven have not been returned?
No, seven total.
Seven total.
Sent out.
We only have seven that will be on the tax sale.
I, I just think we'd make the next step, if it's, if it has to be a certified letter to wherever they live, we make that step and then we move forward, then we sell it and it's ours.
Well, that's what we've done.
Well, we mailed it, we've already done the certified letter.
Yes, that's right.
So is that handed to you and you sign something that says, I got it?
Oh, it goes by mail, doesn't it?
Have you ever gotten a certified letter? There's a little green thing on the back that you have to sign.
Don't make fun of me, but.
No, I'm just trying to explain it to you.
I probably have, but.
So, so like it's an envelope, it has a green cardboard thing that's stuck to the back. The post office makes you sign it, but they rip that off and then they bring it back up. So in order for you to receive the letter, somebody has to sign.
I understand that, so if nobody signs. Does it get hand delivered then from the deputy chair?
We could do that.
That's what I'm talking about.
But doesn't it have to come back here for that to happen?
Kelly coming over, let's, I'm gonna. Right, eventually the post office will, will print it back to us and say it was on the. I think they try like three times, I'll say, I mean, three or four attempts and then they'll send it back.
I mean, some of these houses, people are living in, I mean, they're not, they are year-round houses, they are not seasonal, you know.
It's not an empty lot.
No.
No, no.
They aren't necessarily sent to, if they have a address, like Phil Austin had to give my address.
Right.
We sent it to his in, in Rock Island, we didn't send it to the property he owns in the lake, because we know he's not there.
That's true.
I think most of them actually are living there.
See, that's what my contention is, that's my issue, people are living there daily and not paying this bill.
Yeah, well, they got the letter now and it's gonna be sold, so.
So we're talking about Leisure Lake. Did you? Did you send out certified letters?
Yes, I did.
And how many did you send out?
Seven letters to six different property owners.
Okay, and how many little green card receipts have you gotten back? So that means that three people, three?
Three or two.
Two, two people, two property owners, I sent one to two different addresses. And one of the cards, one of those cards came back as undeliverable, so we need to come for six. And we've gotten four.
So one of the ones, the one that came back undeliverable was the one that, the Blakeman? Or was it?
No, yeah, no.
Um, the one. Kearney, James Kearney. Cuz I also had our real estate, where she's had to see that, and I sent it to Sea Rapids also.
Oh, okay.
I think you did have a phone from that? That's the one that came back.
Oh, okay.
Or the one at the Ridge Road, I'm not familiar with. But you gotta have anything, yeah. I mean, he signed it or not.
And what's the timeframe for the cutoff timeframe, to get them back?
March first, or it's. Well, to get them back, it's up to the post office, they'll make so many attempts before they send it back.
Okay, so let's talk about that one bigger person, Kearney, who do we, if we were to have, if we were to do sheriff's service on it, where would we serve it?
Ridge Road has sent them back, so Ridge Road. We're not a hundred percent sure, I mean, I mean, they may be still trying to have any fun.
Right. And so you're saying that if we would have our local sheriff's department serve up in Leisure Lake, there's no cost to us, right? And the other one? You said there was two, who's the other one?
Who's the other one? Blakeman's was gotten back. Um, Rose?
I just wanna make sure until we understand if we need to do that, and so then Sarah, the question I would have for you is, do we send the same letter, we just have the sheriff's office personally deliver it?
Well, we will get the actual letter back, so yeah, we would just have them take the envelope and serve it. They might wanna open it so they know what they're serving, so they can certify to us what they serve.
Okay, and just one other comment that I know that I dealt with, there was a real estate transaction done and at the time of the, of the transaction, when I saw it come through the office, I called the attorney and I said, you do realize there's a significant amount of assessment against this property and he said, I really don't care, they sold it as is.
Kearney, we have gotten back, you have, yes, okay.
So does that mean that the person that bought it assumes that debt?
Yep.
Are they aware of that when they sign that?
Yeah, I don't know, I talked to the attorney.
That's a single problem, that's, that's not our problem.
So I'm just, I mean, there's just an issue up there with, with letting everybody know, that's the problem, is everybody needs to understand. You know, that there's this monthly charge.
So the one in Rock Island, does he know who he sold it to?
This has been a long, the Ridge Road issue. We've been going back between Rock Island and, and Rock.
And I got Austin back. Oh, okay, they're illegible, but, okay, so our files was. Gary Rundy is back.
Thank you.
And the Blakeman's, the two Blakeman property. So. Five, that's a waiting for one.
Oh, you're not someone that. So the question I have is, what kind of money are we talking about with those assessments?
Yeah. I don't have, I don't have, I didn't, well, wait, then I sent eight back, eight dollars. So seven property owners each, yes. So we've got two out there, so I didn't even grow. And they're both, they're both addresses here, so we needed to have a sheriff's service.
Yeah.
Yeah, just move forward.
Do we need?
Yeah, but we need.
This memorandum?
Yeah.
I would move to.
Have the chair and the auditor.
I would move to move forward with the memorandum or approve the memorandum that was presented and have signatures as required. Second.
One motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
Just to make sure, what you want us to do then is to send sheriff's service. And they'll be local, so it should be current cost, that's.
If there's a deadline for them to have them back, if that deadline passes, we certainly want to move forward, yes.
Well, I think when March first rolls around, we'll have to do a new letter because the deadline, the costs go up every month.
Right.
First deadline was, if you stand by this date, then this is the cost, if it's after March first, then you encourage additional cost. So we'll work through that. Any other questions or worries?
Not at this time.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess going back to that Rock Island one, so if that property comes up for sale and somebody buys it, is that guy signing off on it again after he sold it to somebody else, who we don't know who it is?
What do you mean?
Eventually a tax sale deed will be issued.
Right.
And you buy it because you're buying the special assessment, I don't know as far as the property taxes, but you are specifically clearing up the special assessment.
Oh.
Well, that was gonna want to give them the objective either, so.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, if this guy sold it to somebody else, this is the person who even realized that all this is going on. All of a sudden.
I mean, well, I think that guy left it in mind. He decided, he changed.
Oh, okay.
Didn't file the deed and put off.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Shelley, do you wanna tell Nathan he can come in? Nathan, he's been walking back and forth in the hall.
Yeah, we definitely wanna have something set up right for Bellevue.
Yeah, I mean, because otherwise.
I think this leads into that, yeah.
Good morning. Good.
Good morning.
We're joined by Nathan Jones and Jeannie Collins, higher, uh, Jackson County Conservation, good morning.
All right, so we got Jeannie's, uh, weed commissioner certification form here for you guys. That'll be something Jack will have to sign if he wants certified for her to become the new weed commissioner. Other than we, so. Want to go over this at all, or? And that's, and that's, uh. You guys, what I did was pretty much put down all invasive weeds that are found in our county. Some of them are questionable whether they're a problem or not, but they're still on the list just case to do come about, I would say. I, I'd say are still our main, main, main problem in the county is gonna be our thistle and that's what our biggest points always gonna be, so. Yeah, and, and Musk, that's of the calls I had last summer per points of land owners, that was thistle related every time, other than one location. And that was just, it wasn't even on a basic basis, it was the grass, they didn't like to leave or not mowing the grass. That's what it came down to, that didn't really fall under my jurisdiction as a weed commissioner.
Do you see an issue, Nathan, with this wild cucumber or whatever it is?
I don't think we have a huge problem with it in the county yet, but I've seen it like Western Iowa would overtake cornfields.
Yeah, I heard some horse horse songs, yeah.
Hopefully we.
Drive into it and.
Yeah, hopefully we don't see it take over.
Watch where you walk.
I don't know, see, Jeannie's more got the farmer farming background, if you guys have ever.
Yeah, I haven't really seen it in our bag fields around here, yes.
I mean, I've seen it double spots, you have a four last, not this last year so much, so maybe, maybe they're evading it, you know, to a point where.
Yeah, I don't know, I think it's one of those species that kinda likes a lighter spring to take off, but we had that kind of last year, so I don't know. What the, what's the difference in the, I don't know, there's a lot of different chemicals.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is herbicide, insecticide or something that's taking care of some of that.
Yeah, it's probably one of those, like a two forty mixed with trachylophier of some sort, targeting that with.
So tell me how the weed commissioner is coinciding with the roadside vegetation?
So, um, I think it fits into the position perfectly cuz we do have weed problems within our county road sites. So, yeah, weed commissioner takes care of weed plants on all private land, but not only that, we have weed plants on our own county managed areas, so. I think putting that into Jeannie's hands would, uh, help us cover any of those problem areas and future, we can start trying to take care of those over time and get them back in shape. So doesn't look so bad on the public side of things in our public sector.
I guess that's one of our concerns is the roadside ditches there, some of them are.
Yeah, I mean.
Getting out of control.
Yeah, vegetation.
Yeah, so I think and Jeannie has as much or more experience with dealing with these weeds than me, I would say probably more, so she knows them more. When we went over that last, I had asked her what a couple of them were, I didn't know. To tell you the truth.
Well, I said, you beg to.
So. Yeah, I, I felt bad, I'm like, man, I don't know what this one is.
Sorry, something new.
Yeah, yeah, so, but there's always something coming from another continent that seems to be our new problem, so.
Absolutely.
I figured out how to handle them, the issue a lot of times, so, I don't know.
So exactly what are we looking at action for to approve the report and?
And the appointment of Jeannie as the weed commissioner.
That's not on the agenda and that this document doesn't do that, so we have to do that next.
Okay.
This document is simply reported of what they found last year.
Okay.
It says possible action.
You have to.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the weed commissioners' report. Any further discussion?
I guess we looked at some of the different things in the budget, you know, is there money set aside for spraying and equipment and stuff? And whose budget is that in, Southern County Secondary Roads or?
That's not really in a budget, but I, I think at that time also, we were also going to look into grant funding and what they were going to do because that was a big.
I think, so there's a percent of REIT that's set aside for roadside management and then there's some other spraying opportunities. grain opportunities out there within our state. So I actually asked this to Larry the other day. I think Jack might have brought it up when I was talking to you a long time. If there is some money currently in a fund, will that correctly?
We still have a weed commissioner fund, it's like forty six hundred dollars or something.
So we do have.
I wondered for this year, just to get her going, if we could buy like a spray unit just to start some action, like a small one that would fit in back to the truck or something with that money to get it moving.
We did talk about that.
So that was something and then as we go forward, we could start applying for some of these grants to get maybe actual get the truck set up to really hit some of these problem areas, but to get it at least started. Let's try to, I think if we got the money there, but I don't know how we go about spending that money and who I go to, do I go to your this board for approval or to my board for approval?
I I guess you bring your invoice into Lisa. Lisa gives it to us to review. And if we have questions, we call you.
Okay, so. My board, if we spend over twelve hundred dollars, we gotta have the board vote in a room.
I think my my opinion on this is you have a a current existing budget. And then you'll have next year's budget because we didn't take it out. Right, so you you should have plenty of money to buy equipment and supplies.
Okay, so and I think I actually put in from one of our our habitat, our forestry fund for a little bit of money just to get some chemicals and stuff.
No, I mean, you're not going to lie to buy a lot of equipment before we five hundred hours.
If we can get her going.
Yeah.
Because I thought secondary roads probably had sprayer. You've talked to your husband and it didn't sound like they had. They haven't sprayed for many years.
No, we begged them, but they keep ignoring us.
There's a big issue with that and they've done it in the past. And they've done that. All right, now all of a sudden you killed grandma's rose bush and you killed my first row of corn all the way along my fence line. Well, somebody's paying for that.
Yeah, and I think there is definitely a concern about that, but and hopefully it never happens. I don't know. The state does it all the time and. They can get.
I mean.
They just gotta be smart about how we spray and where we spray.
We need to talk a little bit maybe to Clinton County also because I know they must have a pretty aggressive. They, I mean, you travel them roads. And Clarence Loudon, there there are no weeds in there, brush there.
Yeah.
Grass.
Yeah, so I'd imagine they have a pretty, and I've worked, like when I worked in Western Iowa, Shelby County, they come out, we burned some roadside or some from a D and R they gave them help from. They had an aggressive unit that they spent three months of the year just spraying. I don't know, something in the future, we can get to that point, but I think at least getting something now.
I think we just have to get a good, we have to have a start.
Yep, so.
Build from that.
Instead of just sending her out with a chainsaw and getting little nothing done.
Be careful with that.
Yeah.
Amen.
That's the problem. We're probably have to take another staff member or change someone or seasonal just because I don't want to sell them my.
Oh, absolutely not.
So which I'm fine with for sure. We can find time to do this thing when there's areas that need that too, so.
And we certainly want the cooperation of secondary roads also.
Yeah.
It's their responsibility from the center line to right away, so.
Yep, so.
And so is our weed, you know, it says that in our.
I think it's going to be a working, open relationship. Hopefully we can get something done.
You're right.
So, but with that money, we may go find a smaller spray agent and get her going. And then get some of that chemical out of our budget we have known, so.
And something I think we need to get out there a little more than we have is if that property is, if that right of ways on your property, you can maintain that. Well, I said, okay, if I move my ditch, I'm like, yes, you know, if you want to cut down trees, go for it. I mean.
Yeah. Yeah. Something you'll have to communicate with some landowners for sure.
And we do once in a while have some landowners that encroach in the right away. That fence somehow gets getting closer to the side of the road.
I know how it is.
Yep.
So it'll be a but her all these years, well, unfortunately, she's dealt with people that might not. She knows how to handle some situations, so I think it'll be good.
Well, I think we had a claim come in because a road grader hits some fence posts that were on the road.
Oh.
Around his horses right up. And he put the fence posts on the shoulder of the road. Well, how do you grade the road when you got fence posts? They're still there, but they're probably up the snow.
Yeah, and I think that's something we're being more really need to work with secondary roads, even buying her right away. Those are right away is our setting straight anywhere in the county from what I can tell.
Well, the actual right away seventeen percent are correct, or thirty three.
They're supposed to be.
The fence is not necessarily there, but that's what the ordinance.
Yeah.
Right away is thirty three feet.
Yeah.
Do you want to start maintaining that? I can type a property right now that I would.
You could drive anyone.
But we also kind of got to keep a good relation with our citizens, so.
Absolutely. That's all we do.
But we'll probably start, we'll get her, we'll start looking into more on what we can at least get a smaller rig for going.
I would step in since you're here. We step in, talk to Shelly, see what the current budget is and what is proposed for next year.
Okay.
And that way you know what you can work with.
We'll do that.
And if you find something, you know, maybe you could buy something in say May or June or somebody could wait till July for the payment or.
Yep.
I mean, there's some creativity.
Yeah, there is definitely creativity there, so we can. Get something and yeah, even if it means it's a little, we can burn some road ditches where a brush is a problem, maybe knock it back. I don't know.
That's good too.
Yeah.
It's all, it's going to be a multi-passed way to go at it. There's not one great way to other than that, I don't think. Especially with some of the bases we got. All right.
Cool, okay.
Good.
Thank you very much.
You guys.
Thank you.
I will hand this over to Lisa and she can save it for next week.
We'll do that. How about I just put that on my agenda for next week?
Okay. And we did approve the commissioners' report. And we have one of those to sign. Okay. Do you want to do you while we're waiting for Christina to get here?
Okay.
This time we're joined by Luann Goki, executive assistant to the board.
Good morning. Calendar for this week. At ten thirty, Jack does have a Mississippi Valley workforce discussion meeting by Zoom. If he chooses to be done by that time, we're done by that time. At noon is the Jackson County Economic Alliance annual meeting by Zoom. That's for everyone. At six thirty tonight is a public hearing on Sebel's urban renewal plan by Zoom. Wednesday, February twenty fourth at nine AM is an Irish meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at seven o'clock Wednesday night, so Jackson County Emergency Medical Services Advisory Committee meeting. And that will be at the Spring, Spring Brook Fire Station. For any of you that want to attend that. Thursday, February twenty fifth at nine AM is an RPA meeting by Zoom for Jack and Larry. And at one thirty that afternoon is an Isaac's Executive Board meeting by Zoom for Larry. Friday, February twenty sixth at seven AM is a local leadership team meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at ten AM is a ticket to work training session by Zoom for Jack. Monday, March first at ten AM is an early childhood Iowa site visit for I Smile. That's by Zoom for Jack. And then at two o'clock is another early childhood Iowa site visit on the childcare consultant. C C R and R by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be at nine AM on Tuesday, March second. That afternoon at two o'clock is another early childhood site visit to head start by Zoom for Jack. And that will be like Sunday. A little bit short for that day, because I think Lisa is going to be a little bit.
Yeah.
That's why I have free day.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we'll be joined by Christina Trenal, Jackson County zoning and GIS administrator. Good morning.
Beautiful day. It is, yeah.
Yeah, everybody excited about forty degrees.
So I just wanted to get some direction from you and give you an update on a nuisance property on one hundred and fortieth street and miles or in the Green Island area. I had sent a letter out to the deed holder of the property, just letting him know what was going on, that the property is has had some damage and there's some debris outside and gotten some comments about it. He called me last Friday and was asking for an extension based on COVID and the weather conditions. He's also looking into whether the property has historic preservation and that's kind of going or could have the historic preservation. And that is going to determine whether they want to make repairs to the building or. So he's asking for an extension to April period and I wanted to bring that to you guys and kind of get some direction on that if that's something that you would write to the law.
Uh, is that a month extension then or what is that? What is the deadline now?
March nineteenth.
And you said till April when? I personally don't see that as a problem. Because of the fact that we got twenty inches of snow right now, which is not a major factor to a demolition outfit or a track hole or something to that effect, but on the other side of it, I don't want this to carry on another six months. He's, it's been that way for two years. So if there was historical. You know, there was, it didn't change since then. So if you want to move forward with it, let's move forward with it.
I would say the drop, drop dead date would be April thirtieth. By that time you should know where he's going with it.
Well, he needs to make a decision. I mean, it's been that way for two years, so. Change. Senate church or school?
Church.
I think it was both.
Yeah, it may have been.
That is all that I have.
Something's going.
Good. Yeah. Yes, yeah.
So you're not just sitting there twiddling your thumbs.
No, not at all, no. Keeping me on my toes.
Make sure if you need anything, you let us know.
I will, yeah, sounds good.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll recess. We have a couple work sessions. I don't know if we need to take any action on any of those, but we have a, is, are we having a budget work session today or is that just on the agenda? Yeah, yeah.
Good morning. I think you can go over any time.
Yes, I am muted.
Okay.
Does that not increase the the regional fund then again to?
It it will, but am I unmuted here? It does show.
We we just mute unmuted Jack.
Oh, and I need to unmute myself.
We do not. We leave that as muted because otherwise we get feedback, but.
Okay, well, let me try and recreate this conversation. Yeah, um, I am here to follow up on the monthly governing board meeting, which Jack and I attended yesterday. And the conversation largely centered around the budget for FY twenty-two. And there were two conversations that played a considerable part of that discussion. One of it is the fund balances. Both at the county and the region level, because we are obligated to be currently according to law. At forty percent or below by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Projections for this current fiscal year put Muscatine, Jackson, Jackson and Cedar County above that threshold. Jackson is projected, I believe, on eighty-seven percent. And also the region's fund balance above that threshold at about forty-eight percent. So the counter to that conversation is what are some of the expenses that we really should be incurring? Because again, by code, there are things that we should either have in place or be putting into place. As services and in one situation as a position for the children's mental health for children's system. The types of services that are being discussed are we are to have access to, even if it's not physically in our region. Have access to a service called Subacue, which is kind of a step down from a hospitalization. And also access centers, which are kind of a assessment. Point where someone can go if they're experiencing a mental health crisis who can be evaluated. And to get assistance in kind of resolving that crisis and moving forward. Then it is the children's coordinator that we should have in place. And at this point, you know, it's the feeling that that needs to be a full-time position. That person will need to be able to have a travel amongst all five counties and that. Children's system is, there's still a lot of questions about how actually regions are to. Set out the children's services that are required. So those are some fairly large expenses, some additional expenses that we see as more one-time. We had not had training in our crisis system budget with the Robert Young Center for the past two fiscal years. For this year and last year, I believe. Because of the need to cut back on expenses. It sounds like law enforcement agencies are interested again in some training for their officers. There's one training called Crisis Intervention Training CIT, which is fairly expensive. And it's a big commitment for a law enforcement agency to send their staff. Because it is a forty-hour program all done in one week. So it basically takes one person. Out of their full-time role in being on duty and being in training. I know locally. There was a meeting last Thursday between the region's crisis system, myself, and then the sheriff, the chief deputy and the jail administrator. And that was one of the trainings that was mentioned as being that they would be interested in sending staff to as well. So so that training could be a fairly big one-time, one-time item for that. I don't know, Jack, what you'd like to add to that discussion. I mean, there is more to it, but what do you think your fellow board members might benefit from?
Well, obviously, I think it's important that we get somebody in to. Be the coordinator for children's services. I think that's an expense that we need to incur. And there'll be an assistant and there's, but you know, I guess one of the things that we're talking about. Quite a bit is children's programs and other programs. Once you get them started, you want them to be sustainable. And where we'll have the money to do that. Especially, you know, like I told you, Lisa and told Shelley, I said, right now they're asking us to level at the maximum. But when you look at what our ending fund balances are. Eventually, the state's going to come in and they're going to tell us what we'll levy. If we are above that forty percent, they're going to come in and say, okay, this is what you have to do. But. A lot, another part of that money is that the two point four million we got from cares. That's included in the in the totals. And so you take that money away. And one of the things that we discussed yesterday is we took the fourth round of applications. For funding because we, at that point, we thought we had three hundred and ninety-one thousand available to give out to people. Then I guess somehow or other they found that somebody hadn't gotten their check. Or it had been sent and it was up in aerospace or whatever it was. And so it ended up that rather than three hundred and ninety-one thousand, we had three hundred and two thousand. That would be available for this last round. We had nineteen applications. The nineteen applications totaled nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in requests. So then we went and thought we just look at the applications that were providing just core services. Well, when they looked at that, there was seventeen that were providing or just asking for funds for core services. Well, that sold totaled seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So we, as a board, everybody discussed what they thought we should do. So we did tell, we did did tell Lori that we didn't want to see the applications. And that we would look at what they were. And then there was, I I said, well, can you please on that? If they have received funding prior to this fourth round, would you please tell us how much they got? So that we can look at that too, because I'm going to think somebody that maybe got two or three hundred thousand dollars. Maybe somebody that got ten thousand, maybe they might slip in a little bit ahead of them. So they're gonna, the the management team is going to review them. They're going to give us, send us out the applications that they with some additional information. So that we can review those and make some decisions. So. But you know, we know all the providers or a lot of the providers, they couldn't. They couldn't provide the services they normally would in a in a normal year. Because people just weren't coming in. They were afraid to un-understandably, understandably. They were afraid to come into the clinics and the offices and 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 the employees aren't doing the outreach like they might normally have done. So that that doesn't help the ending balance either, because if you're not providing those services, you're not paying for them. And. It it's. It's just been a nightmare. I I feel sorry for the management team and for Lori. And I feel sorry for the providers. But I don't know what we would have done if we hadn't gotten the 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 two point four, two point eight. Can't remember which it was.
We got two point eight, so we've distributed about two point five.
Yes.
And to that, that went to nineteen school districts and twenty-six providers in the five-county region. So the governing board has really done their due diligence to review all the applications. Because they've seen all the applications in the first three rounds as well, just as they will the fourth round. And really spent a lot of time setting priority and in some cases maybe parameters on what they were comfortable funding or not funding. But a lot of people benefited. I mean, it put a lot of money back into the economy here in the five.
And we and and we did expand what. I mean, after discussion and and consultation, we did increase some of the things that. At first we said no, and. Then we changed it like substitute teachers and some of that stuff that, you know, we thought, you know, the schools are having to pay two employees. One under contract, one is a substitute. So we did do some changing with that. So we were trying to help the school boards and the school systems that way, but you know, there's just, there's just so many dollars. And I know that some of the schools also got co-careers money. So but it's 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 really been an undertaking for the management team. And then for us to review what their recommendations are and then come up with our two cents worth.
And ultimately, it's more than two cents because you have the authority to make the decisions. And then when questions come back after the fact. Ultimately, it's the governing board that has made those decisions. But everything I've seen, when I look at what other regions have done or heard what they've done. I think our board has done due diligence and I really don't anticipate that there will be any questions if any of the providers or. If the use of that money is audited, which of course is always a concern with the federal dollars, you know, they. They can come in and audit and make sure it was used for its intended purpose. And if it's not, then it could be required to be paid back.
And that was one of the things that, you know, we really looked at because we didn't want them to come back. And it took add another hardship to the providers or the school districts to have to pay. That's why we had several school districts that didn't request anything because they had gotten cares money. And so they didn't want to have to pay it back if they came in and did an audit and said. Well, you already got this for this. Why are you getting it again for this? So I know several, a couple of the school systems in Jackson County didn't request funding because of the cares money that they had gotten.
Yeah.
Well, you certainly don't want to take that in and have a spot for it or not have a spot for it. Then all of a sudden, you go, well, somebody could request it back. The children's services coordinator is, to me, is a must or not. I mean.
Well, there's no way the management team and Lori can do that. They have to have somebody else.
We've already established with the testing that's been done that there's a need for that, you know, like you said, certainly you want to sustain it. And then if you have the coordinator and find the problems, you've got to have the money for the to help them.
And you have to find the people that are willing to do that. There's not a lot of children providers.
And I also certainly think that law enforcement training is 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 a must too. I mean, that's basically.
I have to tell you funny, yesterday when we were talking about with Robert Young's, Robert Young Center. Down in Clinton County, they had a ride along, somebody that was a specialist in. Trying to calm people down and get them to where they needed to be. And so they were actually riding in the squad car. With the patrolman and whoever they had picked up. Well, then they decided maybe that wasn't safe with the Corona and stuff or the COVID. So they would just follow the squad cars. But what they forgot was the squad cars can go with their sirens and take off. The person following, they couldn't take off and try to keep up with them. So they decided they couldn't do that. I kind of chuckled at that. I thought, at least there's something humorous about. You see this poor person that's supposed to be with them and she's, she or he is trying to catch up with them to see where they're going. I just, I thought, oh, that was, I thought that was funny. But I was very happy yesterday when we had our meeting that. Because I had talked to Brent several times and I had talked to Russ and Steve several times about. The availability of this training for mental health for the officers. And every time they would have a class, I would ask, you know, was there anybody from Jackson County there? And I always got, no, no. And so then I asked Brent, while he was campaigning, I said, you know. What's your, what's your thoughts on mental health training for the police and then the sheriff's department? He says, it's an essential part of our our job. And so when I was really happy yesterday, when they said that they had met with Brent and Jim and Andrew. And I think you were in on the meeting, Lisa was there and talked about the potential for training for some of the officers and some of the. But I just think it's 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 imperative. Because I know Jason, our police officer in Davenport, he said, you know, he's had some training, but he said, you can never have enough. Because he says you just never know when that's gonna, when you, when you go and that's what the call's going to be.
It was a very good meeting. Very positive. Very positive attitude, I think a very positive outcome. So at least they know that there's help available if they need it.
Yeah, they had a lot of good questions. I thought of Jen Tumail from the region's crisis system who facilitated that. She was there virtually. She was not in person. She recovered pretty well from a couple of technological glitches. Yeah, but no, it was, I thought too, it was a very good starting point. So and the region is more than willing to make themselves available to assist with trainings. Or hear what is needed and figure out together how it can be provided, so.
But I think, you know, David Farmer has really, I mean. The last few reports that he's given us have been easier for me to understand. There for a while, I just, I, if I had hair, I would have pulled it out, but you know, you scratch your scalp and then you get sores. But anyway, I just thought, you know, how are we going to get through this? How are we going to end up? So, you know, and I've just been so curious as to. Actually, why we're, why we are doing the. The maximum levy for mental health when we're looking at having this much carryover. But I think until, until the mental health region gets their budget done, it's going to be difficult to do anything. But as we indicated, once we get that done at our public hearing, if we, if there's a chance that we'll lower that levy. You know, we don't know now.
Right.
There's so many things up there, but the main thing is that legislators have to understand the predicament that they're putting us in. And and the big thing is, yes, we can afford to do some of this stuff now. But we want to, as I said, we want to make sure it's sustainable. And that's the thing we can't look at.
I can't imagine that on the legislators that are out there deciding this, how they feel. That they can control your budget and when each region is different. And have their own issues, how do they feel that they can tell you what you need? I don't.
Absolutely, I don't either.
Just saying, you know, how logically, when they say there's an issue, if you've got a sixty, seventy percent. Override, well, it could be an issue, but let us figure it out and say, what can we do long-term to sustain a system? And unless, unless they don't trust you, that's what I'm getting at.
Well, I think there is a lack of trust and I also think that the big, and it goes both ways. Because here we're setting our budget and we have no idea what the legislators are going to do before the end of April. Every, every year in the last several years, they add additional things that we are required to do. And they haven't allowed us to do anything about generating the revenue, revenue to provide them. Now they're saying, okay, you have to have that levy to carry over down, but be below forty percent. Or we're going to penalize you, but yet, okay, now you're going to have to provide this service. You're going to have to provide that service. I mean, it's it's just crazy. They tell us what we have to do, but they aren't, they are not. Iowa team players. It is.
Can't plan for something because you don't know.
And it's like I said at the meeting, I said, well, we were talking about the end of March, we're going to have this other meeting. I said, you know, we have to have, we have to have our budget in by March fifteenth. But yet legislators aren't done till May. So it's just, it's, it really is scary.
Yeah, it is. Fiscal year twenty-four would be the first year that we would have to really scrutinize. If what expenses we have been committed to in previous fiscal years we can sustain. Because. After June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, that's when if current law stays in place. And there is legislation, I believe, still active in Des Moines. That does have some discussion about either pushing that forty percent requirement a little bit further down the road. Or I think that seems to be the gist of what the conversation has been. But after June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two and then during fiscal year twenty-three is when the department of management would look. If the language remains at where the fund balances are, and then at that point for fiscal year twenty-four, they could tell counties. Where is that their levy? Because there was that lag.
Yep.
And the same would be true then for fiscal year twenty-five, according to David's projections. They would probably end up telling us again, you know. Because we are, we would, we are committing to a new expense that has to be sustained and that is that children's coordinator. And you know, the dollar amount for that is fairly high, but part of the reason is it's not just a salary. It's all the benefits that go with a full-time position. And the other discussion we had and part of the figure that the board has been given does include purchase of a vehicle. Because when we look at traveling through the five counties and paying for mileage for that. You know, and wear and tear on an employee's personal vehicle, knowing that that extent of travel is what's expected at that position. So, yeah, I don't know where this will all land, but it's. And you know, Mike, you talk about that, you know, they tell us what we can do. You know, for the first twenty years, in nineteen ninety-six and ninety-seven, then the counties were all, the counties were all capped at a dollar. And that dollar amount remained the same for twenty years. So however, twenty years, could you do much if there wasn't some ability to generate more revenue? And counties for years had asked for the ability.
Oh, that was a ISA priority and mental health priority for years. Wasn't it nineteen seventy-six?
Yeah, I think it was nineteen ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Yeah, ninety-six, ninety-seven, I think, were the fiscal years a county could pick from. So it'd be twenty years. I mean, this redesign happened in two thousand fourteen, so almost twenty years.
But they kicked that can for how many years, you know?
Oh, yeah.
What, if you're going to do it, make a decision, no different than their legislative thing now. It should be a priority in the first month. So it coincides with our budgets. Makes no sense to do something in May. It's not fair to anybody.
No, it's not.
Right.
And that's always what they do.
Your logic here, I mean.
But they understand.
Because even last year, even last year when we were talking about this, they said, we're going to take care of that first thing after we get into session. Why they do nothing, not so.
The school budget and that mental health budget should be the first two items that they address.
Yeah, I would agree. But it hasn't happened yet. I think that's about it. I mean, the most of the meetings, if any discussions, how good is either CARES Act or or the budget? There will be a follow-up meeting with the governing board for both of those topic areas. So. Any other questions? Otherwise.
If you look for this, this, this carrot for juvenile, the juvenile character for there, does somebody locally?
Does somebody locally do you think would apply for that job or is that a nationwide? I, I would anticipate that, um. First of all, we have, the region has to determine who is going to be the county employee of employer of record. Likely, I would say it's probably gonna likely be Skye's.
Probably.
Um, it needs to be somebody that's in close proximity of Lori, cause they're gonna have to work close together. But I think the knowledge base that we're looking through that position, I think could be certainly local. Um, because really what we're interested in is somebody who understands children's services. Maybe has some relationships already with schools and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I don't think it will require.
Yeah.
A, a real broad, someone locally will step up and I think, yeah, I think there's.
I'll be surprised if there's not someone local that applies.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yes.
In some aspect.
Over time.
Could be very stressful.
Yes, in the beginning.
All the above.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think that, you know, we are so fortunate to, oh, and Lynn.
Yeah.
I want you to know, after our meeting was over yesterday.
Yeah.
I had some time before my next meeting, so I did my update garage.
Oh, you did? You're a heavenly then, John.
Yes. I said, I think I'll just sit here and do it while I'm waiting. So if you, if you talk to, uh.
Julie.
Julie, tell her that's what I did.
You get a gold star because I bet you're the first.
I said to Luanne afterwards, I says, I bet I'll be the first one. I says, I'm gonna, I should tell Julie. I did it right after the meeting, so.
I'll tell her that.
Okay.
And it was much more user friendly.
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't painful.
No. I did that.
Yeah.
But you better follow the rules when it says, hit the bottom right corner arrow first and then move on. Otherwise, you don't get credit for that.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the board today?
I was just gonna give you a, a brief update on that. We had a housing trust fund meeting last weekend.
Okay.
And um, them programs are all working really well as far as the rehab projects and lead-based paint projects. Um, twenty twenty one projects are distributed out. Uh, really, I mean, this year's pro- twenty twenty one project, a lot of it is in our. Um, pocket neighborhood project, so for the down payment projects and, and just an update on that briefly. There was an open house that bullied cold weekend and I did talk to Heather in our office and she had a fantastic turnout.
We went, Marilyn went, Marilyn.
Twenty-five people come to and she had some interest, they think they sold, maybe sold two more units, so just an update, you know, not positive pressure.
Well, I was telling you the house that they had open. Um, the furniture store set it up with some furniture. But I said, you know, when I walked downstairs to that basement, I mean. I mean, upstairs, there were three bedrooms and two baths. Um, downstairs, there was a, the hookup for a bathroom, but, but the whole one side, the whole half of that. Area was, I mean, you could have the most fantastic family room or two more bedrooms and a family room. It was so large that I was, I was just amazed. Cause I had been to one before, some friends of ours that, that we know through church are building one. So they invited us to come and see that. It's not done yet. They're gonna, they were supposed to move in in February, but I don't know if they will. But um, I was just amazed when I went downstairs and saw the size of that downstairs. And the nice thing about the downstairs is the way the lay of the land is, there are windows above. You know, above the ground that you can see out from your downs- downstairs too.
It's also makes it ingress and egressable so that you can have. No, that's going well. And of course, these projects are almost one or two years in advance. So the twenty twenty three projects, now I think you gotta have your applications in by August, I think. A lot of good projects, housing, rental rehabs, uh, they're spreading it out, like ten thousand here, ten thousand there. So I think good projects and updating some of these older homes and that's all good projects, it's working well. Not a, it's not a really elaborate meeting that's, does a lot of, has a lot of frills to it, but it's. I mean, you see uh, things improvements like that, it makes it feel good a lot. Uh, and.
Well, I think it's exciting, exciting about Preston too, I hope, you know. I didn't realize they had that big of a housing shortage down there.
Yeah, well, they're in a good spot there, you know, with, with Illinois issues and and some of the.
Sure.
Thompson project and that coming across here, people don't mind moving. And I heard on the news last night with this, with Prince now passing his new bill that he was so proud of about that thick. And it puts a lot more restrictions on law enforcement. He said, they interviewed some of the Rock Island uh, law enforcement people. Said, we'll be looking to move toward Iowa. Some of the restrictions they're putting on law enforcement over there, you know.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, it's hard to say.
They have any jailers?
I did talk to Alex briefly and he, uh, yeah, he, he wanted to check into some other things. He's gonna start our bridge inspections, he hopes tomorrow. He's finishing up on some of the cannons today. He said, he said, the weather's decent enough, he says, but I am waiting through waste high school.
There was an article in the Telegraph Herald today, did you see it on, uh, the opening of the Delaware County Jail?
I seen, I seen Mr. Leclerc and he was in the control room and I thought, well, that's not your specialty right now. I feel Mr. Leclerc was on that extensively on that show I was talking about earlier too. Otherwise, I don't have, I think, any other reports.
Um, I will tell you about Lionstone Bluffs RC and D. We had our meeting last week. And we had an intern, Jack, um. Jack or something like that. He's a, he was a student at Augustana. And um, he's worked this semester for us. Um, and um, he's putting together a, a new map. And it's going to be for um, veterans memorials and the Freedom Rocks in, in this area. And the nice thing is, the guy that's painting the Freedom Rocks is doing a story. And they, he allowed us to um, use his picture. And uh, give some information about how we started this. And then he also, he also provided the pictures that he wanted us to use of the Freedom Rocks in this area. And then.
Be kinda interesting if he plod them all out and tell, and then coordinate with tourism too, you know, that veterans love to do that. They love to drive around.
And then if there's, I think there's just one county in, in our, in our C, our C and D that doesn't have a Freedom Rock. So um, they're going to, they're gonna highlight at least one or two of the veterans memorials in each county on this map. And then the Freedom Rocks. So that should be out by, out by spring. And that was one of his projects. Really nice young man and uh, he, he wasn't at our meeting. But he will be at our, at our March meeting. But uh, um, Lori said he's just been, she says, he's just been the most cooperative young man she's ever worked with. And he's, she said that his professor that's over him was really pleased with what he was doing. And Lisa's, or um, Lori says, I hope that means that maybe they will let us have. Have interns every year.
Yeah.
Cause they have the energy and the time, uh, cause they get college credits for their internship too, so. And he's, he did tell her that was, that the internship was going to allow him to graduate in May.
Wow.
So.
Awesome, good news.
Anything from you?
I just reading the Coca-Cola Watershed Authority thing, um, we have one, had one last night for recreation on the river. And there's one tonight for agriculture. And just in my surfing last night on Netflix, I found a really good. Um, one hour, an hour and a half movie on, it's called Kiss the Ground. And it explains ways to save our earth and it's just amazing. All the different projects they've done throughout the world and how, just how much common sense it makes. I mean, how to use cover crops so you don't have to use fertilizers and pesticides. And it just, it just took you all over the world and showed different projects that they have done. I would recommend it highly to everybody, children, whoever. I mean, it's just very informative, it's very well done. Uh, explains things very.
Something that the school should be putting out there maybe too, using for an hour here or there. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's our future and the, the school really should be using things like that.
It just was so well done and it was done in twenty twenty, so it's very current. And it shows so many projects of what, like this barren area, I think was in Israel, they showed from the top of a mountain and it was just. Bare ground, desolate, and they were managed to reduce some grading and control the water runoff and, and plant trees and grasses and stuff. And it's just, it's a forest. I mean, it's a green area, it was desert, so. And it also goes into the United States dust ball, it explains that, how that happened and ways to fix it. And, and really straighten the town. It's just wonderful, the information in it, so. I would recommend that highly to everybody. I mean, especially, it, it, just everybody, kids, I mean, it's so family-friendly. Uh, like it talks about raising cattle and farming garbage, San Francisco.
Something even the extension office or for rates and things like that should really get into.
Yeah.
You might wanna mention that.
Yeah, San Francisco, they don't have two garbage containers, they have three, and one's for waste uh, food. Or cuttings from, you know, your corn husk, everything like that. And you can use that one for free and the reach, um, recycle one is free and the garbage one you pay for. So it's enticing people to do that. And it was like seven thousand pounds of, of food waste they get a day. And then they have a compost area and they redo that and then they put it back out for soil. And it's just saving their landfill areas. And it is, there's so many, so much information in there that's. And it's doable stuff that, I mean, you don't have to spend money to do it. It explains how you can farm like that and save money, make better profits and help clean up the air and. Um, just wonderful. Uh, it was, it's about everything that we do in the Watershed Authority that we've been learning over the last couple of years. It's all there and it's in black and white and color to see how these projects work to clean up the water and, and fish, everything.
How would you like to pass that on to?
I will, we have one coming up here at one o'clock. That's my exciting news for today.
Well, if there's no other business, we have a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Just encourage everybody that uh. Next Tuesday's election day, um, if you have any questions concerning. Um, the flyer that was sent to every household in Jackson County, we encourage you to call. One of the supervisors or the sheriff's department and get your questions answered and uh, make sure to vote. And they can vote at the courthouse now. Um, until Saturday.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, okay. Okay. Meeting is adjourned.